This is the July 9th, 2025 meeting of the Akrishnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda today are the secretary's reports from June 12th, both the meetings at 11:30 and 12:15. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions on those minutes? If not, we just need a motion.
Do we want to do a motion to accept both minutes at once or separately?
You can do both at once.
Motion to accept both sets of minutes. Second.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is the budget.
All right, we have ended FY '25. So what you see in front of you is the final budget report for FY '25 minus the energy bill. So I will discuss our salaries first. So we ended up 98% spent for the salaries. In the director and patron service supervisor lines, you do see that it went slightly over. That was due to a calculation that was done wrong during the FY '25 hourly rates for myself and Sandra. I spoke with Jen and Jamie, the town accountant, to get that rectified. So that's why it's slightly over, but it's okay because in the library technicians line and children's room assistant, I did not spend, I did not spend it out completely. So in conclusion, I think that we ended up pretty good. We're almost close to 100, but I'm glad that the situation was rectified regarding myself and patron service supervisor rate. So in FY '26, that rate will, it changed because of the calculation that was used for FY '25. And we're talking a couple of cents. Okay?
Okay.
That's not bad. So that's it for salaries. Any questions about the salaries? Any clarification? All right. So for operating, we ended out at 89% spent. So the biggest one that wasn't completely spent was the energy line. We are waiting for June's energy bill. I have not received it. So I will submit a memo to the town accountant with an estimate of the energy bill for June. The building and grounds line, I was able to max out due to a clog that happened in the public restroom. So I will talk about that situation, but I will talk about the financial amount for that right now. So what I was able to do to pay that bill is I maxed out the building and grounds line and I used our revolving fund to pay the rest of the bill. So that invoice for unclogging the toilet ended up being $845.75. So I didn't write the exact figures of what I took out of each line, but it was taken out of the buildings and the revolving fund. There was, I only used a revolving fund twice this year, so this was the second time. Our telephone line, we are at 70, we ended up being at 79% spent. Office supplies, I should have spent 100%. Just time got the best of me. And the same with children's room supplies, and as you know, material was completely spent out a few months ago. So in conclusion, I was able to spend 89% of the operating, of operating for the library. In summary, we, I have spent exactly 96.3% of the budget for FY '25. That will go slightly up once I figure out how much the energy bill is for June. Any questions about operating or the entire budget for FY '25?
And do you have any questions? That was great. You can't cut it any closer. That was really good.
No, you really can't.
That was excellent. It was excellent. I mean, and we kind of, we were playing around with the energy anyway because we really weren't sure what was going to happen. So I'm not surprised that there's a, I mean, happy that there's a surplus there.
Yes. I will say June was very hot, so I think the bill would be a little bit higher than normal Junes because we were reaching 100 degrees in June.
Right, because of the air conditioning, right?
Yes. Yeah. So when I get that bill, I will update you guys on the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Can we have a motion?
Take a motion to accept the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Building and grounds.
All right. So a lot has happened regarding the building in June. I shouldn't laugh. So the walkway was finally sealed on June 22nd. So Charlie came in to power wash it the previous day, ran a hose from our spigot in the back, ran it all around the building, power washed it. It was sealed the following day. It was actually a hot day. So we did it a little bit later in the day, but we were closed because it was a Sunday. So when I came in on Monday, it is shiny. It is sealed. He did mention that the paint that they used to paint it was, is the wrong paint for that type of paint. Okay?
Okay.
Don't know, but it's sealed.
I'm sorry, the paint we used for?
The concrete, oh, the walkway. Yep, it's the wrong type. So it is sealed. I will reach out again to see when it would need to be resealed. Is this a yearly thing? Is this every other year? We do have a bucket, I would say a bucket, half a bucket left. So it's not something we would need to purchase again. As long as it's stored properly, it is in our basement. He took care of the rollers. I asked, "Do you need funds for it?" He's like, "No, it's, you know, don't worry about it. It was just the material for the actual ceiling." So that was done finally. I'm happy to announce that Rick returned from his medical leave. He returned on the 23rd. So he's back. And then, previous to his arrival that weekend, I was working. It was a Saturday. And a patron came to the desk in a panic. There was water. The toilets were overflowing. So when you hear that, immediately I run to the restroom to see what was happening. Indeed, the toilet was flooding. There was water everywhere. There was water coming from the top. There was water coming from the bottom. So.
The pollution. Yeah.
So I shut the bathroom. I, you know, I didn't need to shut the water off because it did stop. But I closed the bathroom, obviously, for public use. This bathroom on this side was open to the public. I let it sit there to see if it would recede, and then it did. So I took the plunger. Back it again. It's like a goddamn stuff. So I let it sit the weekend. I did call a plumber because it was a few hours to see if I could get in touch with anyone. And this is the same plumber that I called for the urinals. A local company, they didn't reply, and so, you know, it was fine. So I cleaned up the water best I could that Saturday because I wasn't letting it sit there over the weekend. So I cleaned it up the best I could with a mop and a bucket and so forth. And then I left a note for poor Rick who was starting that day. "Hey, the toilet is clogged. Welcome back." Yes, can you see, because, you know, he comes in at 8:00. "Can you see if you can unclog it and try flushing it?" So I get that, draw the text. "It's clogged. It's overflowing." I'm like, "Okay." So he cleaned it up. When I came in, I called Bass Ready, who has fixed our clogs in the past. They came in, they fixed the clog. There was two gentlemen here. They were here for about an hour and a half. The long story short, there was a giant wad of paper stuck.
Paper towel?
Yeah. And I asked them, like, "Well, is it deceptive?" Because it was mentioned that maybe deceptive. He's like, "Septic is absolutely fine." So they, I have, I sent you guys the pictures. I spared you that. They have, they take a picture, which I like. I think it's interesting, of the camera going through it. They removed the toilet, so the hole there. And they put everything back together, put this new ring around the toilet, and they found the clog, removed the clog, and the invoice ended up being $845. So knock on wood, that's the end of that. We haven't had a clog since 2024 January, which is right before we had the pipe replace. So this was the first times we had something. But it was an adventure because it was the weekend, you know? And no one's here on Saturday, Sunday, and I wanted to make sure that there wasn't stale water and stuff hanging out. But they responded pretty, pretty fast. They were here within a couple hours, so. So that's that. So the good news is it's not an article of clothing because that has happened here. It was just, you know, like, the house. So moving on from flooding to damage to the deck. So last Thursday evening, we all experienced that microburst of energy. Staff were here. We do close at 7:30. Staff were in the building until 7:45, which is roughly around the time that storm was happening. So they noticed or heard, actually, they heard, they heard from the desk, a crash. So our deck chairs blew through the deck railing. And they obviously weren't going outside to pick it up or to assess the damage. It's too dangerous. So they sent me a text, and in a bit of a panic, I was like, "Well, do I go?" I'd be like, "No," because the fireworks were happening in New Bedford. I live in the South End, so I would have been in traffic. And then it still wasn't safe. You know, I know Akrishnet, it was suffering flooding. Things were closed, or roads were closed. There was trees down. Anyway. So I came in the following morning to assess the damage, to do cleanup. There were chairs all over the driveway. The columns for the railing were all over the driveway. I was able to stick the columns in there, but I didn't realize you have to, I did it backwards. You have to put them down first and have the top railing out. I'm not, I don't know how to. But I had it there. I secured it so that there is caution tape there. And I reached out to, that day, I reached out to the town administrator and the maintenance foreman and to Jen because we're open on Saturdays. So not that I was expecting anything to be fixed, but I just wanted them to be aware of the situation. So that Saturday, I let staff know that I took care of the area, so it's secure in that sense with the caution tapes and remove anything that could have flown elsewhere. So Matt emailed me back. He was able to come by to look at it. He said that we should file an insurance claim. I said no. The reason I said no is because by the time we file an insurance claim, and I don't believe that is that much to be fixed. All the columns are there. It just needs labor to remove the top part to put the columns into place. The deck chairs are fine. It's just, I don't think it's worth pursuing all of that paperwork for something minor. If the completely deck blew away or something, then obviously, but it's minor. I was able to fix it myself, and if I'm able to fix it myself, I'm sure someone who does that for a living would be able to fix it. So I, you know, he's on vacation, so next Monday he will come by. I'll explain everything. I know which bracket needs to be replaced and everything. And, you know, they can go ahead and just remove the top part and stick them in and then put it back on. Because it's the cheapest, quickest, and honestly, the safest way. I mean, I can imagine how many insurance claims are being put out right now, so. I said no to that, and if that is wrong, please let me know. I'll be deductible, so.
Right. I was just gonna say.
I think that's a good decision.
Yeah. And if that's wrong, I made the, I said no, and if that's wrong, please let me know, you know? I'm.
I think we should look into getting you a tool belt. That I think we should do.
I want a tool.
That might be, there you go, a tool.
Have a whole bag.
I have my nails. You've got a bag on your head for one drug.
Outside and inside.
I have my nails on so many, yes. There was one car, they were dropping book stuff, and we were like, "What the hell is this woman doing?" And I wasn't dressed in work clothes. I was, like, regularly, I had a concert t-shirt on. "What is she doing?" But yes, so on Monday, hopefully, I'll have more information. And if I'm wrong, you know, I'm just looking at what I see and I, you know.
It's probably, it's a small, it's one small piece. It probably doesn't cost that much money.
The bottom part, first of all, I don't even know if I had a screw the entire time. So that's a whole other situation. But like, the bottom part was completely gone. So I was able to put it back on. It needs to be screwed in. I don't have tools for that. And then I was able to put them in. But then I'm trying to, like, put them in all together, but I'm by myself. So one goes in, one goes out, one goes in. And then I was like, I talked to my dad, and he was like, "No, you're supposed to put them on the bottom. The top part's supposed to come off, and then you put it on," which makes sense because the bottom part has like a little, like a screw or something. Anyway, so that's why the deck looks like that right now.
I think you did a good job while you were doing it.
I think you did a great job.
Right? It looks good.
It's been a wild month.
I know. So I had to, I did.
And it's what the knife.
I know. I had to throw away, unfortunately, a table did not survive. It completely cracked. So I have to fill that away. And then the anaerobic chairs have cup holders. They all came out. I don't know why. So that had to be thrown away. All right. So the deck. I think that's it for the deck. And then, one more other item.
Here's more.
There's more. So, I mean, everything, knock, knock on wood, everything seems to be fixable, fine. So this morning, or yesterday, Rick noticed the ants were back in the hallway. The flying ants. So our flying ants love to live in the light fixture above. So this happened last year. I panicked. I thought it was termites. Called proficient. They came out. We had to close the entryway. They left a giant light source or something. So that entry was closed for about a day and a half. So this time around, I'm like, "I don't know what you're up to." Little ants. So the ants, I told Rick was gonna remove it. I'm like, "No, they're alive. They'll fall on you." Or, you know, fly around. Let's leave it. They will die within a day. Unfortunately, you know, sad, but true. And I'm not.
Call for low.
I'm not gonna call proficient. I don't want to close the entryway. You know, I don't want to close it. It's very busy, today especially. So I let him know that, just leave it. I will look on it. Every, you know, every hour, I would go peek in to see if anything was falling. Everything's fine. It's just contained in the light. This morning, they're all dead. So I'm glad I didn't panic.
Sorry to hear about your death there.
I know, right? So when Rick's in tomorrow, I'll have him remove the fixture and remove the deceased from the light. So, but I keep an eye on it, and I really do believe it happened last year during this hot humid weather.
It's gotta be humid.
So there's some cycle that they have, and they only live in that light. So who knows what's in this, yeah, like?
Right.
So yes, that's building update, the last one, fully.
Well, they say things happen in threes, so.
Yes, yes. Any questions about building updates or building situations?
I think you got it under control. Anybody have any?
No, but your director's report could turn into a comedy script.
Imagine this if I leave out because it's not moving for camera. Working with the public, let's just say that.
Can't make this up, though?
No, we cannot. All right.
All right. Well, then if nobody has anything else on the building, then we'll move on to the vacant library tech one position.
So I have hired, I've done the interview process or that job application process. This will be my third time in my two years. This is the first time that I've received 18 applicants.
How many?
Eighteen for this job. I am amazed. Unfortunately, that makes my job difficult in leading out through these applicants, seeing who would be a good fit, because it's difficult, you know? You're, hiring is not easy. It's not for the faint of heart. So I, the job has been posted for almost a month. So a week ago, I reached out to six candidates, or more than six, and explained the hours. Some could not do the hours, so unfortunately, I had to cut them. So I scheduled six interviews for this week. I already did four interviews. I have two on Friday. So we are moving along with the vacant tech position. I'm just amazed at the pool of candidates. I feel like the children's librarian position, when that was posted, it was like pulling teeth to get. And even the tech position, tech two, which was 19 hours, it was also a little bit difficult. But something about this job, I don't know if it's the hours or what, or just the climate of the job market, it's like every day I keep getting applications.
This is 12 hours, right?
It is 12 hours. Monday, Wednesday job, 3 to 7, alternating Fridays and Saturdays. Fridays, 1 to 5, Saturdays, 10 to 2. So it's, and I didn't do anything different. It's posted on the normal avenues that I use. So I'm pleased to say that, you know, hopefully, we'll hopefully have a full staff, fingers crossed, sooner than later.
Great.
Any questions about the hiring of the new tech position?
It sounds like when you're not doing building stuff, you're working on other things.
That, also about the carpentry skills on the government.
Right, to the days you have a bathroom and plumbing.
How are you? No, that's.
Okay, moving on to new business. Lending to decertified libraries.
All right. So I'm gonna try to explain this as fast as I can. And it's an unfortunate circumstance. So what I'm asking here, I'm gonna ask what we can vote on, and then I'll explain. So what I'm asking is if the trustees would like a policy regarding decertifying libraries, meaning not to circulate items to libraries who are decertified. So would either be a yes or a no? And if it's a yes, I will create a policy. We'll have it voted on at a meeting. If not, we'll just not do anything. So what this means is I had a training for state aid. Even though I've done state aid twice, I like to go to the trainings because things change. They mentioned that if your library does not have a decertified policy, that now is the best time to have it because of the climate of budget shortfalls across the state. We do, you know, we do not have a decertified policy. I reached out to the library directors in the network, and the majority of libraries do, except Wareham, and I understand why. So what this policy encourages? So if we say, if someone comes in from a decertified library, which by the way is rare, there's only been one circumstance that I'm aware of since I've been in a public, working in a public library, but because of how budgets are being cut, you know, unfortunately, the policy, what it does is it encourages municipalities to have libraries maintain their certification, to be certified by receiving the appropriate budget, the MAR. So by having it, so if a patron comes in from a library that's decertified, unfortunately, most libraries will say, "I'm sorry, but we cannot circulate this item to you, but you can use our space." So what this, what this encourages is the towns or the cities to fund their libraries, so you don't have patrons restricted, only restricted to their current library.
So that means outside, as an example, that would mean outside the sales network? If one of those libraries was decertified and that person came here and you didn't know about that?
We wouldn't be able to circulate.
Is that the case with any of the sales? Was Wareham included?
It happened to Wareham. Wareham does not have a policy, but I would say, when I started, 2017, I started public libraries. I think that years, they were decertified, which is probably why they don't have a policy because they understand, you know, their patrons would go to a network, a library in the network, and they couldn't borrow anything. And that library cannot borrow outside either. Everything in their collection is what they can use. So that's like saying, "You came here and you wanted a book. That was at New Bedford. I'm sorry, we can't give it to you." Meanwhile, if you go to New Bedford to check the book out, they can't give it to you either. So a decertified, the policy allows, it puts pressure on towns and cities to make sure that the library remains funded. It remains, in order to meet the standards to receive state aid, to not be decertified. So it's kind of in support of keeping funded, you know? Keep, in a way, it's how libraries are trying to keep other libraries funded. There is a law that states that, it's a Massachusetts law that certified libraries are not required to extend borrowing privileges to residents of decertified towns. So it's not something that is, you know, someone decided. It is a law. It's ultimately up to the library, but a majority of libraries have a decertified policy. I mean, it could never, ever, ever happen, but there was a warning, so to say, in the training about now is the time to think about it, which is terrible.
Do any libraries have a policy saying that they will allow people to take out?
I have not seen one.
The only one, their policy is basically to uphold the law.
Yes. Yep, and they throw in the code, I guess.
Well, and it says that the, it says that there were not, the certified libraries are not required to, which is, I think, where it gives you that leeway to either not use.
So I'm thinking.
In other words, we could go with you the way.
The only one who responded to me with Wareham, and they said they did not have it.
So I'm thinking that in the absence of having a policy, you are in essence allowing people from decertified libraries to borrow. So I think that's, that's how I'm understanding it anyway.
I have a question. Is there any input from any of your professional associations on this issue?
So sales, they also replied to the email with, so there is a policy through sales that they do not, they, even though libraries still pay into the network, they are not allowed to borrow materials from outside of their library.
Okay.
But it's up to the library to let patrons borrow from a decertified library. I mean, it says that you're allowed to use the building, you can use the computers, you can attend programs. You're not barred from entering the library. You're just barred from borrowing materials, essentially punishing the patron because the town or the city did not have, did not make the library meet the requirements for certification. So it just puts fire on making sure that your residents.
So in turn, it will make those patrons upset, which then will in turn have them go to their, their cities and towns to be like, "Well, look, because you didn't do this, we can't do this here." their cities and towns to be like, well, look, because you didn't do this, we can't do this here.
Exactly.
Well, I think it also, um, if we do have a decertification policy, we can, it gives us an opportunity to to depend to the town that we're not helping other towns operate without certification. I mean, that we're, they're protecting the interests of the town, if you will.
Um, I I, yeah, because they're, yeah.
I mean, I could see some criticisms coming from, hey, how come you're letting all these people from X town to come in and borrow your your books? And then you want a bigger budget, well, how about considering that?
Yeah, yeah, if it gets to the.
Punitive to the individual, but it it, in the climate, I think there has to be some protectionism of of, you know, the library.
Yeah, no, most definitely.
And its mission.
It's, um, it's, I mean, like I said, it could never happen in a network, you know, but I mean, it has happened, but like, because of how fragile budgets are right now.
Right.
Uh, all it takes is one slip of something, and then a poor library will be decertified, so.
Right, it's a lot of work, to be certified to get that.
Oh, yes, it is. You need letters from everyone, and the board members, and the MBLC letters, and uh, all kinds of paperwork.
Everyone is awake, but maybe their towns are not always.
No, I mean, and that's why when I do the budget, or present the budget, I'm talking about MAR, meaning MAR, 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 because that is the biggest thing that I can't control. You know, I can't, I mean, I can control the, but like, I can present a budget, but I don't have the final say. And that's the biggest thing that I think if a library was to be decertified, it would most likely be the the financial aspect. I don't think it would be the hours, 'cause you know.
You're more, I mean, you've already, you are in control of the credentials that you need to have, you're in control of the library hours, which need to be. So you can check off all the rest of the boxes, but that one piece is in the hands of
Yes.
of the towns.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So you need a motion to proceed with developing the policies.
Yes, or not to proceed, just leave it as is.
I'll make a motion to proceed to, for you to develop the policy.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we have, do you have anything else before we move on to the?
Uh, no, director's report. Unless something happens, since I've been in here to the building.
Do you want to check?
I should, I should, I'm jingling. Oh, the pavilion fell, oh my god, that, that, alright, director's report. So, I'm happy to announce that we have, since now that the numbers are probably up, we have signed up roughly two hundred and thirty patrons for summer reading. So that's ages three to adult, yes. Um, so that is really going, we're in our second week of prizes, fourth week of of signups. Um, the, I have the, under the action items for the town, so updates to IT stuff. Um, so I noticed, I I, last meeting I mentioned a fax machine switch. So that was actually installed on twenty third. Um, Nick came in, installed this little box that goes in the back of a fax machine, that now eliminates the phone line. Um, before he left, he made sure it worked, it worked. Um, and so far, we've had no issues with it, the only difference is we no longer need to dial a nine, so we just dial one and put it over the numbers. So what this is going to do, uh, what I was told, is that there'll no longer be a phone bill. Uh, but there was, it was mentioned to me that there is a two hundred and fifty dollar fee for the box, I haven't received an invoice yet. Um, so we'll see what happens. If I receive it, I will be taking that out of the phone line for FY twenty six. Um, while Nick was here, he noticed that I didn't have a badge. I'm like, what badge are you talking about? He's like, you don't have a badge? I'm like, no. So I guess the town has badges to access the buildings, um, to clock in. Uh, I don't clock in, so, you know, but my staff, everyone else on my staff does. So he looked at our time clock that we have on the wall, and he's like, that's been discontinued. Like, what? What do you expect is continued? So, a new time clock was installed on six twenty eight. Meanwhile, he asked if I could take pictures of staff to put on their badges. So I had a JCPenney studio in the children's room. So I took staff's pictures behind the blue wall, everyone was, I mean, you're doing your glamour shots, smile for the camera, no one with a badge during the shift. Their sole purpose here is just to clock in, and it's actually the barcode. And being a library, we're used to barcodes, so. The time clock is there, we don't have the badges, 'cause they're backed up, which is understandable. So staff are putting in their employee numbers and uh, entering their time, they're clocking in and out via punching in a fashion time clock. Um, so, that's the update on uh, IT. I'm glad we're now on the same page as the rest of town. So I don't know how long the town has been using badges, but um, we're.
Align badges, we don't need no sneaking badges?
No.
You guys are up to speed.
Yes, but it was just funny, you know, like sending an email, like, I need to take pictures of everyone for your new badges. Everyone was a trooper, though. Um, so we're waiting on the badges, and I did turn in the old fobs and the type, the tap cards, as I call them. Um, so that's back to IT. Um, so the there's, summer, as you know, is extremely busy, so the the director's report is, it's missing a lot, but I hit on the 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 things that are most important. Um, and then, I think that's it for the director's report. Any questions about the director's report?
I'm ready to ask, it sounds like you've been doing enough.
So I will talk about some of our programs, lastly, so for announcements. Um, today's a very busy day, um, we are filled for our program for the animals of the rainforest. So I know you wanna stick around for the snakes.
I'm just happy we're here before the snakes were here, that way there's, if there was one missing, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be finding it. Just saying. I mean, I'm happy for you that they're coming, 'cause I know that you're looking forward to it.
I am.
But uh, I will not be attending.
We'll see what else shows up. Um, so we have been receiving a lot of phone calls about tonight's summer concert, uh, it feels like every Wednesday is gray this year, but you know, we we've been really lucky these past few years, beautiful weather on Wednesdays. But Cam Shave Jazz Orchestra will still be here at, unless it's changed, in the past half hour, will be here at six o'clock, under the pavilion. Um, unfortunately, um, tie dye with Toby, Dr. Toby Dills has been canceled, so there is no tie dye program that was scheduled for Tuesday, July fifteenth at one. Um, I hope to reach out in the fall to maybe reschedule or do a different program with Toby. Um, we have on Saturday, the nineteenth of July, a drop in board games, it's very informal, come in, play some board games at noon. On July twenty first, we have Ed the Wizard here, um, at two P M. Um, I'm not gonna mention things that are filled, because we are already on the waitlist for a lot of the things. Um, on Wednesday, July thirtieth, this is something a little bit different, I'm doing a storytime, uh, with uh, these two crafty chicks. So, um, we're doing under the sea theme storytime, I'm going to do some books, or read some books. I'm not a children's librarian, just throwing that out there, uh, but I do enjoy it, I've found out. Um, and then the, and then their craft, um, is, so they actually have a wood shop at their their shop. And they are making these little wooden mermaid heads and pirate leaves that they can paint and color, and then they attach to yarn, it's really cool, it sounds weird, but it's really cool looking. So they're coming in that week, our children's librarian's on vacation, so we'll have stuff. And then the following day, this was a last minute booking, I originally reached out to them, but they were on vacation. So I'm having a princess meet and greet with the ice princess from a movie that I can't mention, from Disney. Um, and that is registration required, and that's at two, so it's a meet and greet, storytime, I'm gonna be doing a craft, and they take pictures. So it's it's um, brand new, and um, you know, we'll we'll have stuff to do that week. Um, prior to, oh, because, you know, we'll have the app with the children's librarian. And then I won't mention everything in August, but just the first, or the two weeks, Henry the juggler will be here, so hopefully it'll be done outside. Um, and that's at four P M. on two, August fifth, and that's a Tuesday. And then our summer concert series is, are still going on, they'll go till August sixth, so every Wednesday, we have music on our back lawn. Any questions about programs coming up?
That is most entertaining director's report I've ever heard.
Yes, this this meeting was entertaining.
Hopefully, in a good way, not like, oh my god, this.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, no, that was, that was really great.
The good part is, we got a library director who seems to rise to every challenge that falls on their lap.
And enjoys it at the same.
And enjoys it at the same time, and is learning.
Going with the flow.
Yes. No, you don't, she's so bad. I have, I don't know how many people show up today. I will say, if I ever own a home, I'm I'm good to go.
Yeah, you know, you might wanna think about it now. Alright, well, you've definitely been busy.
Yes, oh, yes.
Alright, let's see if we want to set the next meeting date. How about, uh, I'm looking in August. Um, are we opposed to a Friday? Can we do a Friday? How about Friday, August eighth, does that work?
Sure.
For everyone? What works for you? Nancy, does that work for you? John? Alan? Jerry? Elizabeth?
Uh, yes, what time?
Okay, what time? Uh.
Well, you don't have until one, do you want to get it in before then?
I, yes, so I prefer.
Eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty.
Yep, that's fine with me. So we'll do Friday, August eighth at eleven thirty. Perfect. Thank you very much, I appreciate that, 'cause I'm on vacation the following week. Um, I think that's it, anybody have anything else? Alright, then.
Ooh, hang on, just a second.
Oh, oh, is that not good?
Uh, no, um, what time?
Eleven thirty?
Oh, perfect.
Sure?
Yeah, I have a doctor's appointment at two thirty.
Oh, okay.
Nothing's here.
We'll get you in and out of here by two thirty, for sure. A lot, a lot. Alright, well, if we're all set, we just need a motion.
Motion's closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.